On Wednesday, October 3rd, 2018. Reminder, this is a public meeting being video and audio recorded for posterity. If you'd all please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all, first item on the agenda is to review, discuss, and act on a proposed site plan for paving of the town hall parking lot. To be honest, I'm surprised we even have to review, discuss, and act. It's there, it needs paving.
Well, the dilemma is that I wasn't sure if it counted for a major or minor site plan review because actually we've changed uses in this building and the town hall. And that's what we're really considering, the whole grounds here.
Whole complex.
Right. We didn't want to just throw asphalt down and someone else coming year off and say how come they got to do that without a review? So that's why we're here tonight. There are some minor changes and I think that's where we can stay with. The first page should be the calculations for the building commissioner identifying the handicap spots, both van access and the standard handicaps. The current spaces for the main town hall remain the same. The old town hall is what's new to everyone this evening because we're changing back to the old town hall. For the town hall parking lot, which is the first plan after the first page here, the yellow would be the oval parking lot. And you see that the green corner, that's delineating the existing parking lots, handicap parking spaces. We have now both. I tried with the paragraph to highlight it. It can't delineate it clearly for the van space and the standard space. So I just left it all one. So both them handicap spots right there in the corner. And then on the blue is the lower level. And you can see the handicap spots here also. Same thing, there's one handicap and one standard. We're considering on a town vote this fall for spring paving, but this fall, special coming is for funding for this. We're going to pave all of that, all the way up to the new asphalt where it meets prime time on top of the hill. Playground area. The second page shows the playground area in the purple. And that'll be the old floor parking for both, all three buildings in that area, the prime time, old town hall and pavilion. Same thing with that last page. The upper parking lot's a yellowish color. You see where the handicaps are delineated. And the lower level is the blue. And you can't see it well, but directly behind the building is where the handicap spot is for the old town hall lower level.
The 311 square feet?
Yes. He's actually an additional parking spot right behind it for people that are just making a quick visit. But there's one spot there designated for the handicapped there. And Jim's designating that one, that's the van, it's a larger one, it's the van one. So that's what we're asking. The War Memorial is almost two years old asphalt, so we're not going to repave that, but basically everything else is going to get repaved. The existing roadway that we have blocked off between the playground and the old town hall pavilion, that's going to get paved, but it'll be just a narrow, maybe eight feet of pavement, just for a walkway. Keep it a walkway, but not a driveway. We'll still have it blocked. We did recognize a safety issue there with the playground. We don't want traffic, through traffic going by there. That's why we're keeping that blocked off.
You're going to make it eight feet wide?
Yes.
Got to post them?
You better put something there because I think kind of they're going to go through.
We'll probably leave the granite blocks there. We might put a billiard in the center of it, removable. We'll see how that goes.
I'm just...
I don't see a need for equipment or anything to be going that way. We'll revisit that in the spring before the paving, but it'll probably be just narrowed with the granite blocks on top of it.
Other questions on the board? Comments from the public? No comments?
Make a motion to consider this a minor site plan review?
On favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Go paving.
Motion to approve it.
Yep, we need that motion.
Motion to approve, yeah.
I'll second that.
Well, we got a motion, I know it's major.
Have a good night.
Good night.
All in favor, are we going to say aye?
We did.
Okay. I missed it, sorry.
So we have five minutes for the road acceptance of Mockingbird Lane.
Oh, that must be very interesting.
Yeah.
See, it's moved when it's wet too.
Mockingbird? No, solar. All right, not yet.
This is the...
This is the underground drainage, right?
Yes, it's underground. There's an infiltration base.
It was a conventional subdivision, eh?
Yes.
What's going on?
October...
Is this the 15th of the week, Monday?
I'm going to say the 15th. Yep, 15.
That's odd.
Yeah. We're having a public hearing right before that. That's what this is for, is just to show that.
Reminder.
That's the room, yes.
Okay, it's 6:15. Votes here for Elm Street, this Mockingbird Lane?
Doesn't appear to be yet, so I don't know if you want to open and then maybe table it in hopes that they're running late.
We would then have to wait for the experts to show up?
They need to be here?
I think they pretty much cleared everything up, but I did get a email from...
Well, there's some minor... Let's read the last page. Not the last page, next to the last. These three items? That was... No, this one. Pated today, October 3rd.
I think the second one would be, it's still a responsibility of the homeowners agreement because of the infiltration system. I don't think the town's taken... I'm not sure of that, but I don't believe the town's taken over the drainage in this one. But it's very minor, just a little bit of landscape.
They also have a homeowners association?
I don't know off the top of my head. Maybe we have a double. Yeah. They probably did, I don't know if they actually did it and established it, but that's the other thing. It may have been required.
We're going to be looking into all of these subdivisions and HOAs and see who's responsible for what in these basins because we got some with trees in them, we got, you know, a lot of vegetation overgrown.
Well, that was the issue with this one. There was a, it's an underground one and just the trees, so they declared out all the trees. They just left a few runs at some of the stumps in that area and just stop sign cleaning. Tom, how you feel about it? You'll be taking over that, except right now.
Yeah, the area he was mentioning, they just cleared all the grass. That should be landscape. It does, it's minor, actually. It stabilized, so it can be maintained and moved.
I suppose we could approve contingent upon these things being done in town meetings in, what, 12 days? And then at that time, we can... Is this on the warrant for town meeting?
It is.
Yes.
And nobody's here?
Not yet.
Probably forgot all of them.
Well, they, up until yesterday, there was, I think it was yesterday, emails were going back and forth about it.
Yes, it was.
Let's open it officially. So our next item on the agenda is the public hearing for Elm Street Estates' road acceptance of Mockingbird Lane. And in the, I assume it was the town gazette?
Yes.
Following public legal notice was posted. Legal notice dated planning board, October 3rd, 2018, 6:15 PM at the town hall, etc. And according to chapter 48, section 11 of the Mass General Laws, "Notice: A public hearing will be held to see if the town will accept as a townway the roadway known as Mockingbird Lane. All interested parties should attend the hearing. Copies of the plans are available for inspection in the planning board office, 979 Somerset Ave., during normal business hours." So, the issues are minor. They are final grading, lawman seed installation along several areas noted in our prior report appears to have been completed. However, the grass eaten many of the areas has not sprouted at this time. Hopefully in a week that will be taken care of, whether we've been having. Including vegetation saplings in the drainage parcel over the stormwater infiltration system. Now, the control structure appears to have been completed. However, some tire ruts from equipment and remaining stumps in the drainage parcels should be addressed. And number three, the stop sign is crooked.
That is a very minor place.
One thing?
I'm going to make a motion at this time that we accept contingent on those.
We should get public hearing, public comment. Any public comments of the acceptance of Mockingbird Lane? So, now we've cleared that up.
Okay. I didn't think there was anybody yet. Okay, a motion to accept contingent on those items, those three items being completed by town meeting.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda. Doesn't have a time, it's a continuance of the definitive subdivision plan for 281 Tremont Street, map 9, lot 33.
May I just ask some questions outside? Who will be notifying the applicant of our decision?
Carrie will be notifying the applicant of our decision. And then the applicant will notify you when those three items are taken care of. And then you can come out and check before the 15th. Hopefully it'll be done.
I mean, you guys can drive by too.
Although the grass may not grow by then.
At least fix the stop sign, because I will check.
My grass hasn't stopped growing. Mr. Chairman, for the record, David Miners, you're representing Ben Newberry, who's here tonight with me. Also here is Peter Lavoy. When last we met, we had an introductory session and the board referred out to their consulting engineer. Peter's met with your consulting engineer. I believe they've resolved the issues that were addressed, but I'll have Peter walk you through that.
Do you want me to go through? I, so, since the last meeting, I met, I got the letter from Peter Williams from GZA. And I made the changes. And then I made one final change to the plan. The second letter was two comments. So I can basically... Well, the major changes to the plan, after doing a more detailed drainage analysis, I had to add a recharge area in this location here on the south side of the property. So that was, that's kind of the major change because I had to do a more detailed drainage report. And by doing that, there is no increase in runoff or volume off the site to that location. The other two interest points that I had was directly to the south and to the corner lot over here. And there's really no changes to the grading and the surface cover in those two areas. The last thing I added was this house, which is to the south. That was the last thing. That was the only change that I made from the second, second comment letter. Just, Peter and I talked about the recharge area and it was a little bit lower. So I raised it about, I want to say, two feet higher. So now it's only a foot, foot and a half into the ground at the highest point, or the deepest point, which is right over here. So it's really groundwater will not affect that. And basically what that recharge basin is going to do is going to basically take that whole roof and just hold it until it infiltrates into the ground. And it was designed for the 100-year storm event. So there is no outflow from that recharge area. And that's it.
So would be happy to answer any questions the board may have, or Mr. Williams has?
I don't recall seeing a list of waivers last hearing or having a chance to discuss them. So, following list of waivers is... So we have a list of waivers, which is fairly lengthy. Peter, have you had a chance to look at these waivers?
I basically, one of the subdivisions where it's... In and itself is going to require a number of waivers. I guess, I haven't looked to them, you know, in detail. But it's really for the board to make a decision now that they're comfortable with the changes.
So...
The additional lot, you know, I think the lot.
So the waivers are in the layup plan, perhaps you can go over them?
Well, I only came up with two waivers. One was the, the reason why we're here is the frontage, the lack of frontage. So the required is 175 feet. You know, we have 132 on Old Somerset Ave. And we have 137 on Tredmont. So basically that's the frontage there. Right now, the lot doesn't conform to the zoning. So, and then the other one was the environmental impact statement or impact report. We're not affecting any resource areas in the area. There was a small increase of impervious, which was, you know, roughly 2,000 square feet, which was the house. And we're basically taking that impervious area and recharging it into the ground. So, you know, we're not having an effect to any of the butters or any resource area in the area.
What is the existing homes there? What is the frontage there on the rest of that whole area there?
This one has 140 right here. This one on the corner has 110 on this side and 130 on Tredmont. So they don't conform either. And I think the average is probably 130 on that street.
And we did obtain a variance from the zoning board?
Yeah, we do have a variance. We filed a variance first. Because, so, we filed a variance first for the two lots because of the lack of frontage. And they did grant us that variance.
And the only conditions that the zoning board put on it was one, that the water and sewer lines for both the two lots that were proposed must be separate from each other, which we do have. And that prior to the issuance of a building permit, a drainage plan must be submitted to the building inspector for showing the existing runoff and proposed runoff calculations, which is basically going to be the same plan we've submitted to your engineer. And I think the building inspector would like, obviously like, they approve it as long as it was approved by Mr. Williams and their outside consulting firm.
Right, and we're not, we're not creating any new curb cuts on either street. Right now, they're currently, there is a driveway on both streets and we're using the same driveway. We, like I said, there's a driveway here and there's a driveway here. We are removing this section of pavement, which basically will counterbalance the new driveway. And it's much smaller. This will all be grass, so now runoff, you know, you're only going to get a small, normal driveway. That other driveway was very long and steep, so you were getting some runoff coming down there. So that is, that safety is, I mean, it's a safety thing that we addressed.
So, on your plan, you have that the lot is not buildable without relief from the Dayton zoning bylaw for frontage. And you have that already?
Correct, but Peter asked me to put that note on the plan, so I did put that on the plan.
And my thought there was something, like if that note wasn't on there, someone looking at this later day may say, oh yeah, this is a, you know, a legal lot.
Okay, all right, so...
And that's the only reason why I put it on there, Peter asked for it, so...
So, I understand.
And if you look, there is, there should be a note on the lotting plan, I thought, that referenced the... The decision from the ZBA, saying that they granted us a variance on the frontage.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little confused. On the one hand, you already have a variance, so you don't really need a waiver.
Well, we do need the waiver. That's the reason why we're here, because it's a frontage, you know, it's a frontage waiver. And the planning board is the only board that can give that waiver to that, because we don't meet the...
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I've run into this in towns, in some towns, North Attleboro of Dayton, if you get a, if you get a furniture waiver, it's a two-step process. One is zoning board appeals, and then before this board, under subdivision control law. Other towns, once you get the variance, and usually cities such as Attleboro, if you get the variance, then you just file a Form A plan before this board and you get approved that way to create the new lot lines. They're both correct, it's just a question of what preference.
And we were told to do, we were told to submit this because of that.
Yeah, I understand that part.
But you're technically under subdivision control, why we're here is because of that frontage waiver. So it's a two-step process in this town, just four, you know, and that's fine.
And to create the two lots.
And to create...
I think that was the other issue, was they got the waiver so that they could have the two houses, but the ZBA couldn't create the two lots.
The two lot lines have to be created either by subdivision control or Form A, either one.
I guess my, this board often votes in favor of lot changes that do not convey buildability. They're just, okay, you want to move this lot, this line here to here, or even Form A lot. So it's just a matter of, I guess it's more academic than anything else.
Yes.
It's just a question of procedure.
Yeah.
Basically, this is a Form A plan plus one, let's call it. So the most important thing here is you're changing the lot lines pursuant to the zoning board's decision. And you're also getting a chance to comment on the drainage, so that's the extra safety check.
Right, the drainage, because normally within A and R, we wouldn't do a drainage.
There'd be no drainage.
I mean, no drainage, no drainage report, unless...
That's the benefit to your town of having that two-step process instead of just doing A and R.
And in that, you're going to have certain waivers because it's just procedural stuff. There's very little, you know, road work, no sidewalks, anything like that. But then there'd be something like an impact report or other things like that that really don't apply to this.
Right, right. Any other questions from board members? Questions from the public? Comments? Concerns? Here, any other thing else you want to add?
No, I mean, I did, there was, you know, one of the ways that, you know, we didn't get test bits or anything, but we're talking about a very small recharge area. And what Peter, the applicant engineer did was they raised the height of the system so that it wouldn't be anything for drought water. It's just basically holding water, so I was comfortable with it.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
I think Peter brought a set of my lines, so we're going to move over to you.
Oh, you want signatures too?
So just keep in mind, under the public hearing until 21, 20 days. 20 days, so on the 21st day, there's no appeal.
Do you file a written decision?
I do, I do. So I will have that written here inside the document.
Yeah. I mean, I had a lot on that one, 160.
I can have them sign this one.
You want a long time?
Yeah. And if you don't mind, I just need the applicant to fill this out and return it to me or fax it to me because this is for the 53G account that we had to sell for the care review. They can either send it back to me by...
Easier so make it.
They had no site plan review of that, didn't they?
What?
So, I mean, site, site plan, site visit.
They did not set one up. He's here to discuss.
Uh, let's see, then that was C. Now we're on D. Public hearing continues. Special permit safety agreement, TGA Solar at Zero Brook Street, map 16, lot 28. Evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Thanks.
Good evening, my name is Christopher King with Atlantic Design Engineers. And I'm here again on behalf of TGA Solar, also at Edge of the South Street. Since we last met, I know we have, we have not submitted revised information quite yet. We appeared before the Conservation Commission, their reviewer. When they went out to walk the site, there were some flags that had fallen down just in the amount of time that it surpassed since the original delineation. So we're working to rehang those, get them checked out to make sure the line will hold, and then do any kind of associated survey to pick those locations back up or confirm. Then we're working with their reviewing. So understanding the design may change a little bit for tonight's purposes. I've brought a plan that is kind of showing our intent, but not quite final. And just to kind of highlight some of the things that I know were brought up at the last hearing before you folks as well. And then I'd like to just go through, based on Peter's letter, the list of outstanding requirements he's identified and just go through which ones the board would hopefully be amenable to, including as a condition of approval to be provided prior to the issuance of the building permit. And that would be specific to equipment items that are typically, that, you know, the final cut sheets and details aren't provided until you go through the procurement process. But certainly that can be provided. Uh, but certainly that could be provided prior to the issuance of the building permit, of course. Um, so just, uh, just briefly here, um, again, not understanding where the wetland line will finally be. We have made some modifications, um, speaking primarily to stormwater. We have increased the size of this basin, um, we've revamped the outlet to direct it, uh, towards the existing swell and really beefed up the, um, the riprap, uh, level spreader and almost a plunge.
Can you turn that a little so that the board can see it? Little more. Tom, can you see that? You gotta angle eyes.
Tom, get a little closer. I took a shower yesterday, uh, last month. Um, is that good for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so you know, this outlet, you know, due to the proximity of budding residents, um, we're beefing this up in, um, in an effort to dissipate that and pull that back and really, you know, decrease any kind of potential, um, adverse effects as far as stormwater goes. Um, we revised the basins as well, so that they're not cutting any more than one foot into the existing grade. Um, again, per the Board of Health's review letter, Todd had pointed out, and it's backed up by the available, um, uh, Soil Conservation Service information that the groundwater table in this area could be as shallow as eighteen inches, could be as deep as twenty-four plus inches in some areas. There're probably good pockets out there as well of soil, so, um, one of the things I'd like to discuss this evening is, um, the test pits. I know that was a topic last time. And, um, again, we'd be looking to perform those, hopefully after we go through the planning board and the conservation process, understanding we would still need a stormwater permit for this project through the Board of Health. Um, at which point we would, um, perform the test pits, um, provide, you know, witnessed by the Board of Health and independent reviewer, provide the test pits to Todd, um, and then do any design modifications required, which would fall within the footprint that you see before here. So if we needed to accommodate additional stormwater measures, we wouldn't be growing our footprint, if that makes sense. As far as screening goes, um, you know, we made a pretty decent effort, um, to kind of reorganize the field and increase the screening along the front and basically leave roughly sixty feet of existing tree line width to remain along the front, with exception to our access point here. Um, in addition to that, again, this will all be finalized and additional information as far as species provided. But our intent is to create a double staggered row of, um, cultivar type arborvitae, like green giant arborvitae that grows quick. It grows thick. It provides year-round screening from top to bottom with a, you know, a robust understory and up at the top as well. And then again, depending on the wetland information, um, we're gonna be working to provide screening here as well. Um, although we have the existing tree line, you know, again, our intent is to minimize any kind of impact, um, including visuals. So we would do the same type of planting, um, up along this edge again. But that will also need to be coordinated, of course, with the Conservation Commission, because it's within their jurisdiction as well. Um, so we'll be, um, ironing those details out with them. Um, I know that there's, um, potential issues, rega- not issues, but there's still some investigation required regarding the entrance and the installation of the culvert. And speaking with Cary, um, council has recommended a title search to ascertain when the road was abandoned and the legality of the road. And then as far as securing any approvals required within the town, you know, go from there. That would be a good starting point. So, um, I believe Cary, correct me if I'm wrong, but the app, the onus is on the applicant to do the title search for that and determine the legalities of the, um, Padres Lane, if you will. Um, there was a list of items, again, if it, uh, you know, I don't wanna waste too much time. But I think it will be, you know, our intent is to wrap some issues up with conservation and then submit to you folks with adequate time for Peter to review. And then, um, hopefully come with a complete package. And so there are some items, again, that Peter had identified, if you wouldn't mind going through them one by one. And, um, there's only seven of them really, and it'd be, the stuff that we would be requesting would be, um, again, hopefully a condition of approval to be provided prior to the issuance of the building permit. And I'll just quickly read through, and if you, you know, hear something that, um, you want a little more elaboration on, feel free to drop me on. So as I mentioned, the, um, electric equipment pads, transformer pads, and the electric equipment cut sheets. Um, you know, again, typically that stuff is selected during the procurement process. And so we would ask that that stuff would be allowed to be submitted prior to the issuance of the building permit. Uh, again, the name and the, and the address of the installer, it's a little premature at this time. We just don't know that. So again, that would be information hopefully provided prior to the issuance of the building permit. Uh, Peter mentioned a, a potential condition would be the emergency response plan with both fire and police. Um, and we're certainly amenable to finalizing that, you know, and we would even be offered to offer a draft, if you will, kind of an example of what we're looking at, just for the planning board's information. And then again, that would be finalized prior to the issuance of the building permit, once the system specifics are selected. And then those specifics can be put into the emergency response plan, as far as like shutdown procedures and anything like that. Confirmation of the form of surety for decommission, um, that's really, you know, tip, it could go either way. It could be an escrow account, it could be a ba- a bond. It's really whatever the board is looking for. Um, the applicant is amenable to that, and typically will provide a, a cost for decommissioning, which is included in, I believe, our original materials. And it considers two percent inflation over a twenty-year period. Um, so again, we would be amenable to, including the costs associated with that as a bond prior to the issuance of the building permit. Um, and then the last prior to, if you will, would be the SWIP. Again, um, typically, we've, and most municipalities will allow us to, um, secure our approvals and link up with the site contractor, get some input, cause the SWIP is somewhat site-specific. And at that point in time, generate the SWIP and submit that.
You wanna spell out a SWIP, please?
Sure, I'm sorry, it's the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, um, which is regulated under the construction, uh, the general permit through the EPA. Um, and to trigger it when you disturb a certain land area, and so this project would definitely qualify for that. And so it basically outlines the erosion, erosion and sediment control measures, sequencing, spill prevention, um, stuff like that. That's site and construction means and methods specific to a certain extent. So again, we typically like to at least know who the site contractor is, go over kind of phasing and sequencing generally with them, and then be able to incorporate that into a site-specific SWIP. And then the only, a couple other things would be, um, and I'm not sure if it would be a waiver request, but I know there is a requirement for underground utilities. As it was mentioned, we do have a run of overhead right at the entrance, and that's not due to the, the wetlands. Um, we have to do an overhead run to get over the wetlands without causing direct impact. So, um, if we need to officially request a waiver, we would be officially requesting a waiver to allow for that short stretch of overhead. Um, and then also a development impact statement, um, we would be requesting a waiver from that as well. And that's it, as far as the items that if we could get a, an understanding of what the board is gonna be looking for, that would allow us to hopefully come with a, a complete submit, resubmital package with revised information.
Any comments, Peter?
I would suggest that they prepare a letter, you know, identifying which ones they're gonna provide information on, which ones they're requesting deferral. Some of these I would not be, you know, open to, and if he's being specific on some of these, and maybe I could talk to him about, you know, the level of information required that they may be able to, to take care of. One of the things is the test pits. I mean, we're, this is, project's gonna get delayed and they, I'd feel uncomfortable if we didn't have test pits. I don't know why we shouldn't be pursuing them and pursue them from the beginning, so that we have complete information, no questions going down the road.
So yeah, if you could put it all in writing, then we can take it from there.
Okay.
Cause what you said, some of it went over my head, some of it.
I don't know, that was a lot, that was a lot. Would it be safe to assume that if I link up with Peter and come to an understanding that, I know he can't speak for the board, but if.
We take his recommendation seriously.
Okay, okay, alright, so, okay, alright.
Um, but we don't like setting precedents that impact future developments, that may, will, they may make leaps of faith that, that waivers that we give to you are waivers that we give to everybody.
Sure.
For instance, the impact statement. For, for a project like this, others have asked for waivers for the impact statement. We have not granted them. And they aren't very impactful, as far as, a lot of the impact statements include things about educational impacts and things that often are more for commercial or subdivision developments or subdivision. So you can, you can do it, an impact statement that's fairly shortened to the point.
Okay.
But waiving it, uh, that, that means that the next person's gonna want the same waiver.
Sure.
Before you know it, we're waiving everything. So if it's a precedent, I don't wanna waive it.
Okay.
That's my, my position, and I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but when we get to the point where we'll.
That's understandable, none, none upside, no problem.
Have you submitted the, uh, stormwater permit application yet?
We have not. Um, that's, um, we have not.
Well, I think what this board will be looking for is the reports from all these committees and boards that you should be talking to, like the Concom and Board of Health, stormwater.
Fire Department.
We have, we have a lot of work to do here.
Yeah, we have, I mean, I, I have been in contact with the fire chief. I know what he's looking for, and this plan incorporates it. I didn't point it out, but he's looking for access to the back of the field to get within two-hundred-and-fifty feet. That's his longest hose reel. Uh, he gave me the size truck that he wanted us to run with auto turn, a program that we can basically drive a certain-sized vehicle around with steering lock angles and whatnot. And so we have a fifteen-foot wide path here, clear, uh, that can handle the SU thirty, which is the truck, and it can get safely.
Are you not sure if that radius, what radius do you have there on?
I'll, when we submit the final plans, and I'll coordinate directly with the fire chief, but I'll provide him with blowups. We'll just show you the tire paths, the bumper overhangs, and it will show exactly how the truck would, would move through that. But I do, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but the gentleman who was doing it when we developed that path, um, we wa- we had to remove some panels due to that, and I know that it will fit in there and be able to turn around. And but again, we'll be providing additional information to demonstrate that with the revised plans. And I'll coordinate directly with the fire chief, so hopefully he'd be able to issue a letter saying that the plan addresses his concerns. So that would be my ultimate intent.
And what is the distance from the east bank of panels to the adjacent house?
Uh, right here, this house?
Well, if that's, you know, I can't see it, but, um.
So we're a hundred and forty feet, roughly?
What about to the property line?
To the property line, we are seventy feet, it looks like.
What is it, just beyond that point? It gets a lot tighter.
Here?
Yes.
This is a detention point. So the panel, the edge of the panels comes down to here. Um, and so that, that row, if you will, is seventy feet off of the property line.
Do we allow detention fines and setbacks?
Yes.
Okay, I, I, I assume so.
What might be helpful if the board did a site visit, and when you have a better idea, when you have a plan, have a site visit and you can mark out where some of these limits are in the field, so they can go out and see what it looks like from the point, looking back to the residential.
Sure, sure.
One of the things, you said that you were gonna put evergreens to create the buffer. Abovites, some kind of, uh, abovites are a good feed for deer.
Hmm, these will, these are deer. The greens, giant, specifically deer resistant, so, yeah, yeah.
I would like that noted on the plan.
Yeah, absolutely, yes, when we, yes, when we, the, the final submitter will include, you know, the species, the spacing, and a typical kind of buffer strip detail that will call out the species.
Okay.
You know, we talked about, see where that square, it looks like a square anyway.
Right here?
That's where the equipment's going, right? No, up, a little higher.
Up here, here, yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
How close is that to that house?
To this house or this house?
That one.
This one here? Two-hundred-and-forty feet. And so I, I forgot to mention, I apologize. So I know one of the items discussed at the last hearing were potential noise and electromagnetic field, um, impacts. And so I'm working, um, and I have data, and we're revising the plan, so that we're going to locate the equipment pad at a distance where it is inaudible at the property line. Uh, per the, the standards, it's typically, you take a measurement of ambient at the property line, and you're allowed to, no more than a ten decibel increase. This is actually gonna be no increase, cause we're gonna set it back at a distance that's inaudible. And again, the distance will, um, minimize the electromagnetic field disruption, and it's down to, I wanna say, uh, I, I wanna say it's point one milligauss or something like that. But again, I'm finalizing getting the information, which was done, um, as for the Mass Clean Energy Collective. And it was, um, done by, you know, an MIT who had grad, a gentleman who has been in the industry by noise impacts and environmental industry for years. But I'll provide all that information again with the, um, the resubmital package. And it will show the distances, uh, the equipment pad specific to, uh, the property lines. And, um, hopefully, you know, demonstrate that, uh, the noise and EMF is not an issue either.
And the northeast, is that a basin for water?
Up here?
No, down, northeast.
Oh, I'm sorry, northeast. This is a basin, yes.
Basin?
Correct.
Okay.
Other comments from the board? Any comments from the folks in the public?
Yes.
Your name and, and, and address, please.
Line in Bosley, six eighty-five street. Um, we have said that if the PERC tests, is that what you call it?
Test pits.
The test pits, um, were not done, then this meeting really, we were waiting for that. That's what, no decision was ever gonna be made without that information. And I assume that's what you were talking about, that it had not been done?
There have been no.
The test pits have not been done, because you said if that doesn't work out, then, well, this is for now anyway. Is that correct?
Uh, essentially, right now, the applicant is asking that we approve conditional to the test pits post.
Right, and you.
Vote, and.
Did not.
As I said, we have not, we have not made that vote yet. We haven't voted on any waivers. But as I said a few minutes ago, uh, I don't intend to vote in favor of any waivers that create a precedent, and that would create a precedent.
Because, um, you know, we're getting, maybe this will be this, maybe this will be that. I mean, how do we?
Well, that's why we're all here. That's why we're all here. We're, we're turning the maybes into yeses or nos.
Exactly, if we can't see what he's really talking about, then.
When we have the letter listing the waiver requests, it'll be in the public realm, and the next hearing we'll, we'll go over that more definitively.
And I know we did talk last time about where we wanted to see some sites that have already been done by this company. Did we have any information on that?
There are none concurrently constructed, TGA sites. Uh, however, you know, on my way here, right on Paddleford Street, um, there are two, um, that are right there, uh, that is probably the closest.
We haven't in town.
Yeah.
But they have not been your sites.
That's correct.
TJ, team, whatever, um, has not completed any solar sites. Is that correct?
I can assure you that at the point where we're ready to approve or not, the project will be equal to or better, most likely better than past projects done in town. That I can assure you of. And I say that because others have not been done to my satisfaction. And I think many on the board concur that, that we need to do a better job. And we have done on the last couple of them, and we will continue to, to look out for everybody's interest. The applicants, the towns, the abutters, everyone. So I'm not saying you don't have to come. You should definitely come and represent your own best interests.
Right.
But what I'm saying is that we will do our very best to satisfy everyone to the extent that we're able. But what I'm saying is that we will do our very best to satisfy everyone to the extent that we're able.
And, um. I apologize for not getting this too soon, but there was a gap. We did from us, it was really took us.
Sorry to hear that.
And I said I was gonna get you that, um, information on the Tesla, remember, we were talking about the stint and the, um. So I wasn't able to, um, I highlighted some of the things like this was where I was getting that information for electromagnetic energy and, um. I did wanna get it to you earlier, but I'm sorry, it does.
Well, I'm not gonna take the time with the board, but could you?
No, 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 I.
Could you scan it and and send it to everybody? That way the board can all read it.
Yeah, absolutely, I would've done.
Well, that's okay, no problem, no problem.
No, that's.
We are not taking any votes at this meeting, so we have plenty of time.
No, I know. I know, you said you wanted to just see where I was getting that.
Yeah, I understand, and I I, the more information, the better informed the board is to make a better informed decision. Thank you. Sir?
Alan Bosley, sixteen eighty Pine Street, that's Stormwater runoff, uh, pit that he's talking about, that's gonna be right at the corner there apparently, that's the way it looks. And there'll be some, uh, runoff that'll go in, covering cul-de-sac, if you wanna call it, not cul-de-sac, uh, culvert, which will follow down. I have water problems already, I just wanna ensure that. If that doesn't work properly, it's supposed to drain at seventy-two hours according to, um, Mr. King. If it's not doing that and it starts to go across the road, especially when the colder season comes. The highway department has their hands full now when the water runs over there and the ice freezes along the road. So if that's the case where the water starts coming out of that and onto the road, just be more problems at that corner.
They'll have to pump it out if it's not functioning within seventy-two hours.
What recourse, if it's not operating properly, they'll have to redesign it?
Uh, no, I mean, the, if I may, the the ta- the requirement for the test pits is gonna help us confirm the underlying soils. And that will help us ensure that. It will drain in the seventy-two, uh, the basin itself, the little riprap area at the corner there, it's not. Uh, a, it's not a basin per se, it's more of, um, it's more of a, it's a, they call it a level spreader. It's a basically a group of rocks that's gonna slow down the flow before it hits the swale and is gonna protect the existing swale. Um, we are, you know, we're gonna be working with Todd and Peter to, um, make sure that we don't have any downstream impacts coming through the culvert. Um, and so is if we're able to demonstrate that, then, you know, the issue you brought up about, you know, potential flooding and freezing in the winter, you know, should not happen. There are other projects that in some instances, if drainage is, um, a potential, um. If someone is extremely concerned about it, there have been, uh, bonds posted in the past to cover any kind of maintenance that would be required for stormwater. Um, and it's not on the town's nickel, um, and so again, those are all things we've agreed to in the past, but we would, you know, just like the time to finalize the design. And go through our calculations so that we can, you know, demonstrate that we aren't impacting that, so.
Could I also, um, request that when a final mapping is done? That we see some footage recorded on the map, so we can see.
You mean the the scale?
Cause he's always measuring it with his ruler, but.
Well, that's typical, that's typical.
And not to how, is it, but not to the house, but to the property line.
Yes, it's also typical that there's a, that there's a line between items of impact showing the distance. So when you make your plans more final, if you could show, uh, distance to.
Yes, they're typically on the s- the presentation plan, I don't throw a bunch of dimensions on this.
Property line.
No, no, we we can't read it anyway, but when you get to that point.
Right, right, right. Yeah, the site plans will have dimensions and it's typically just to the property line. And so, you know, I can, you know, y- your house to the property line, sorry, I scaled for a second here, is. You know, that the south end of your house, if you will, is, you know, roughly eighty feet to the property line. So whatever dimensions we post in those site plans, if you add eighty feet, that would be to the southern end of your your house there. But we can add that information to to clarify those distances and show that, you know, we're pulling it back. And at the end of the day, this existing forest plus the width of this row of screening is gonna be, um, almost eighty feet, almost eighty feet wide. And should be substantial and hardy enough to provide a year-round screening. Um, and we'll add a note on there to say depending on when this project is installed, you could install it in the summer. You could look out and couldn't see a thing, but then in the non-foliar months during the winter or fall, you could lose some of the deciduous stuff or some of the understory might then out. And so, you know, we will be willing to come back and ascertain those conditions with a member of the plant or a designate of the board. And take a look and see, you know, I, you know, is the screening as we had proposed and installed it adequate during the months where it really counts? And if not, come back when it's appropriate to beef it up. Um, and if, you know, I mean, we're really trying to maximize, we're trying to stay far away from the wetland, but also maximize the screen here. Um, and so, you know, in rare instances, if it if it's not effective over here, we have done, you know, obviously the homeowners are amenable to it. We have done off-site stuff too, pretty limited as far as like, you know, Vista corridors and stuff like that, but, you know, it's, you know, we intend to do the right thing here and do that.
Everyone seems to intend to do the right thing, sure. And we have other solar farms, I guess we'll call them.
Sure.
Around town and, you know, they were supposed to provide screening and said they were gonna come back and put up trees and they all tell us this stuff. And it sounds great here in a meeting and your your maps look wonderful too.
Hmm.
And you're making a great presentation, but, you know, in the long run, when these things are built and they can see this solar farm. And we wanna know, who do we contact now? Because that solar farm's been sold. You know, we gotta chase people around. I I know where these people are coming from, I seen that the other solar farms, you know, it sounds great now and that's what this lady's trying to tell you.
Yep.
You know.
And I think I would, you know, I would encourage the board to enact the mechanisms that are in place. So if there was a a bond amount for landscaping that would cover that cost of coming back and planting the trees in the event, you can't chase anyone down. It's a little bit of a pain in the butt from a management standpoint, but at least the funding is there and you're able to, and something is able to be done. And again, we're amenable to that, our intent is to provide, is to provide what we say we're going to provide. And in addition, provide the mechanism for the town to enforce that if we don't do what we say. But my experience working with this developer, although there aren't any projects built, he's already satisfying conditions after the fact that have gone above and beyond.
Well, I expect that, I really do.
Sure.
But most of the inverters on any other solar field is way in the back.
Uh, not necessarily, not necessarily, they're all strung differently.
Now, I know that, yes, oh, yes. If you look at the ones that are mostly, and we've done it through Google search. And you look and most of the inverters are put way in the back, way away from anyone's home.
Or even in the middle.
And I, or in the middle and, um, I know that there's wetlands there, but there's no wetlands where the panels are. So you could put them at the edge of the panels way at that, let's see, that's the southwest corner. And no one can hear it, no one.
Well, if they did that on Elm Street, that's where all the the hardware is in the middle of the array.
Right.
There's a road going up the middle.
Sixteen sixty-eight Pine Street, you're putting that.
Uh, your name, sir?
Joseph Silva.
Thanks.
He's putting that back mark, how does that affect my house?
I'm sorry, I'm putting what?
That station, how's that affect my house?
The.
The one in back of Bosley's.
The inverter.
The inverter.
The tran- this is the transformer pads, the inverters run typically through the array up up the main string.
Okay, the transformer.
And so they all come to the transformer pad.
Okay.
See, it's almost even with my house.
He, is this your house here?
Yes.
I mean, again, I'm, we're, we're going to be providing the information and citing this equipment pad. And so that there are multiple studies that have, there's a certain distance, um, that you maintain from a property line and it's it's inaudible. Uh, which which means you can't hear it. And so, again, I would just offer that we're gonna be providing that information. It's it's studies that are referenced in decisions, it's studies that are referenced in in multiple consultant reports. Um, and it's issued by, you know, the 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 Mass Clean Energy Collective, which is, you know, it's, it doesn't have an underlying interest, so to speak. It's gonna, it's gonna issue studies that are are tried and true. Um, and when you read through the study and read the gentleman's credentials who performed it and the analysis in which he provided, I think that. It will be clear that the transformers, you know, although they're not in the middle, they're certainly set back a distance. And and, you know, not, the distance doesn't even take into account the, any kind of vegetation that's in the way. And understanding we're keeping sixty feet of existing woods and then another twenty feet roughly of a, you know, a thick. Um, arbor by, you know, evergreen type, um, you know, this is further away from that than, um. Than that house there.
My house.
Right, than our house.
But again, you know.
I just don't wanna listen to that, I only, yeah, yeah.
And the, that's one of the biggest complaints of anybody that lives next to a solar farm is the noise of that transfer station.
Well, when we get more information, we can, we can.
Now, in the beginning, didn't you say that it'll be inaudible after the property line?
Yes, inaudible at the property line is the benchmark.
And if it is not, then what's the recourse? If you can't hear, you wanna redo a whole thing, if you just put it way away, then there is no, no problem. Except maybe a little bit more cost or something you're losing from the panels. Should we take that risk and?
Why you say that, on on that road, God, do you hate?
Why does it have to be there if it isn't just for cost issues?
Well, if it were for cost issues, he could put it right up close to the road, it's two hundred and forty feet from from your house. And and I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that it's it's enough, but I'm saying that what you're saying is it's right up close to the road. Well, it's not, it's two hundred and forty feet from your house according to his 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 scale. Now, that may not be enough, I don't know, but you don't know either and we're gonna find out.
I mean, again, there are other solar projects in town and it would be, um. An interesting exercise, these things only operate during the day and it would be an interesting exercise to, you know, go to one.
Well, there is a gentleman on Main Street who has a solar farm way out in the back. But the wires come from the solar farm and they go right behind his house and that's where the transform pad is. He's come to complain about other issues about that solar farm. He has not complained about those those transformers. And I can tell you, if they were issues, he would be here because there have been other issues and he's not hesitated. But I'm not saying that you're right or that you're right, I'm saying we're gonna find out. I think the next thing we have to do, which I thought we were gonna do between the last hearing and this hearing was, uh.
The site walk.
Schedule a site walk.
Yeah.
And if you could, uh, send some dates to Carrie.
Sure.
And then we can decide if those dates are good, I prefer not to be doing it in December through the snow. Although.
With conservation also, with.
I'm sorry, what?
Conservation Commission, I'd like them to come to the walkthrough.
Although if we go later in the month of October, there will be fewer deciduous leaves to deal with except what we're traipsing through, so I don't know what's better.
Better wear orange.
What's that?
Better wear orange.
Orange, yeah, that's. Yeah, let's go before the hunting season, good point.
Hunting season open Monday.
Oh, right, so the commission, you're saying, you would want the conservation.
Right, right, how are you making out with conservation? And without them, yeah, you don't have nothing.
Right, 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 like I said, we're still, we're still making sure the line is what we think it is and working with our consultant. And as soon as we're through that, um, we're really.
I'm very concerned with the water myself, my my big issue for me.
Sure.
I'm familiar with the area, I'm familiar, if conservation is good with it, huh? Yeah. I was gonna have to come up with a stormwater management plan, right?
Then you should come see us, but if they're not good with it, why why wouldn't you come with us?
I mean, I I believe that they are good with it, the only thing is they, yeah.
On the site visit, do you want a representative of the commission or, I mean, they'd have to vote to continue to a hearing, they can't have a public, you know, public meeting. Would you just be a representative of the Conservation Commission at the site, our site visit?
Oh, right. Could the Conservation, do they have a Conservation Agent, Charlie Mello?
They don't have an agent, they have a chairman.
All told, who could go?
They meet next week.
You're gonna be at next week's meeting? So why don't you speak to them about about the site visit? We're assuming they wanna be there, you're you're assuming they are and we all are.
And we said we wouldn't be notified.
So at that point.
You will be.
We could coordinate, it could be a a site visit with us and them and as a part of the public meeting laws, it has to be a a public meeting. So the public has to be informed, so that will take time. But again, if if there's three of us, it's a quorum, it has to be a public meeting. And in every other site visit, we've had at least three of us and usually at least four. So I know it it's complicated, but.
I don't feel comfortable going any further without conservation.
Okay.
Why?
But that's not, not go, their decisions, you mean, not their site visit.
Right, right, their decisions.
I would assume that they have incorporated a site visit into their hearings, but I don't know that. So when you're at the hearing, uh, Carrie, if you could convey to them what we would like and they can convey to you if if they're in agreement.
If they want to attend the.
Site visit with us.
Visit with a planning.
They may have different agenda, so no reason to.
Right, they came with a home, went to Elm Street.
They did?
Yeah, both of them came, remember?
Yeah, okay, yeah, but but it wasn't all of them, it was just one of them.
Yeah.
So it wasn't a, it wasn't a public hearing like ours was.
Okay, okay. And then, so if we, um, send Carrie dates, would it be something where you would?
She'll send the dates, she'll send, she'll send the dates to all of us, we'll say yay or nay and then we'll take it from there. If 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 none of us can attend, then then we'll have to come up with other other dates, but.
We'll usually run, somebody's around.
Not you in this case, uh.
I'm just wondering like the timeframe of the process, like once we select a date, are we waiting, you know, like?
Do you select, what's today, the third? If you said I'm gonna, I wanna do it on the tenth, I looked at my calendar and I'd say I can do it or not.
Okay, okay, all right, all right.
And just keep in mind, if it's a quorum, I need forty-eight hours.
Okay, okay, I just didn't know if there's like a, okay, okay, I'm very, I was unfamiliar with that part.
That's the minute, that that would be the minute.
Yeah, we just need to post it as a pub- pub- continuance in the public here.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
So if you, if you told us the tenth on the, on tomorrow's the fourth, if you gave the tenth, and I'm just making this stuff up. But if you, on tomorrow said, does the tenth work and does the twelfth work? We decide if it was the tenth or the twelfth, Carrie would know within twenty-four hours, she would be able to post that as a public meeting.
Okay.
Does the board have any preferences on time of day?
Or days of the week?
Uh.
During the day, I can't make any.
Yeah.
Good time jobs.
So I I, you know, it depends, tomorrow I'm not available all day long because of my job. Other days I'm sitting around wishing I was doing something like walking through the woods.
I mean, generally speaking, would Saturday work better?
No.
No, Monday to Friday.
Monday to Friday.
Sunday, you're a patriot, too?
Yeah, Sunday, you're a patriot, so, yeah, that's it.
Okay, so weekday.
Weekday, anytime.
All right.
Uh, don't pick ten o'clock three days in a row, pick various times in those three days.
I mean, I'm wide open, that's I, there was a miscommunication at the last hearing, I thought you guys are gonna let me know what worked best for you. And I'll basically need any date that works best for you, so.
Yeah, well, we take our direction from you.
Sure.
In terms of.
You got it.
Of what, of options.
Okay. And then from an impact standpoint, conservation is okay with the plan, they just want to make sure the drainage. And again, I think the test pit requirement now that I have the ability to say, hey, we need test pits, is going to get the test pit information and get a better handle on that. And from the lead Charlie and and the commission, um, as far as our proximity to the wetlands and the crossing and everything else. It's in performance with the interest of the act, they just wanna make sure that the drainage. Um, and, you know, we'll be working on creative things there as well, understanding that's a concern. And whether that's stone trenches parallel to the slope throughout the field, act as long level spreaders to really help spread out and dissipate the flow. And promote recharge and fill back some of the volume, there's a lot of stuff that we could do out here to alleviate a lot of these concerns, so.
We look forward to seeing your plans.
All right, I look forward to it.
Keep the neighbors in mind in the plans. Keep the neighbors in mind in the plans, maybe, maybe you can make your buffer a little bigger, a little better. Maybe you could put your pad a little somewhere different.
You could choose a little bit.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, no.
If you can.
Yeah, no, that's what, I mean, that's what this plan is.
Come to every meeting.
Yep.
We, you know, there are people.
Yep, that's what this plan is, we've increased, it saved an ex- an additional forty feet of existing tree line by pushing everything back. Added some screenings, so, you know, we're listening and we're making the changes. We just wanna make sure all the information comes together and we're doing it in the right way, so.
So if no other, other comments or concerns, would anyone like to make a motion to continue? But before I ask that, continue for how long, a month? Two weeks?
No, I think it would be, I mean, we still have issues with the Conservation Commission and understanding we wanna get a joint site walk. And time for us to go out and maybe quickly tag like the edge of a couple of the things and. Proximity to some of the butters, you know, I think a month would be probably most appropriate, I think.
Well, actually, we should continue it to the date and time to be determined of the, of the site walk. And then when we're there, we can continue it to.
Okay.
The regularly scheduled meeting on a Wednesday.
Right, that works.
So, yeah.
I mean, I don't see anything really this time of year filling up per se, right, I mean, I know we can't guarantee it, but.
Well, it's hard to say, but, but again, we don't know when the, the next public hearing should be the site walk. And we don't know that when that is, so the motion should be to continue it to a date to be determined onsite.
Okay.
That sounds good, I'll make that motion.
Alright, so move, second?
Second.
On favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, uh, if one of you neighbors would like to give Carrie contact info?
She motioned to me that she need.
That way, you can't be mad at us for us not telling you and we can't say, well, we posted it, that's not, um. We wanna make sure that you are aware of what's going on.
My dog will wait.
Yeah, that's certainly will.
And then if we got any other emails, I know that.
Is it a good idea to tie him down?
Oh, no, he's a good dog.
I don't know if I officially have that, I know I talked to the chief, if you would mind if I, just to make sure.
I say to.
I'm like, no, I'm not gonna say.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask a broad question if we have other items at the moment?
No, go ahead, you can. Now, next.
Carrie sent me this subdivision plan, is it for Forton Street, if I remember? This is something that's pertinent for a subdivision plan, I mean, the attorney said a form A with, you know. It's just a house that's essentially just.
Yeah, I, I have this on there.
The house on the way on Montney.
There's two houses there.
Oh, yeah, that thing, yeah.
That came up before, if you remember, that came up before they wanted to do.
Discussion with the attorneys.
That's the zoning board acted on it.
The house is less than ten feet away from, uh, from one another. And it cannot be subdivided, it, it. If they did that, they would have to put, um, sprinklers on both of them, if they even got a variance out of it.
They already granted a variance for that.
Okay.
That's not the subdivision.
No, he granted a variance.
I know, Carrie's, Carrie's got more to call.
Either setback or, uh, non-conforming law?
So, they came before, they came before our board, before, I think it was when I first started, a while back.
I was here.
And I thought they wanted to come in as a form A.
They did?
And we told them, town, or, many of our council said, no, you couldn't do it because it wouldn't be a conforming law.
Right.
So then they went to ZBA and got their variance, which I have a copy of, and they've now submitted a subdivision. So it's basically the same thing that we just had for the Tremont tonight, the Tremont Street. So, now they're looking to subdivide it so that they can make a non-conforming law into a conforming law or two conforming laws.
Right.
So they've submitted an application for a subdivision, very similar to the Tremont Street, um, application that we have before us.
How can that make it?
I can't believe they granted it.
I can't believe they.
The problem is it's.
Or setback.
Because they're gonna probably be, I'm, they're gonna be asking for waivers on those. But what they're having right now, the issue is they have two houses on one lot, which is what the huge problem is. They're trying to fix that because it's my understanding, I think, that the owners wanna sell one of the houses. But they can't sell it because it's all on one lot.
Well, we can.
That's the way I understand.
And so.
So what they're trying to do is divide it so that they can sell it, so that, sell it rightfully.
I, I think I'm.
It's not gonna make it conforming, it's just gonna, it's, it's a pre-existing non-conforming law.
It'll be two grant, two non-conforming laws instead of one.
That's right.
And I think when we talked to our attorney about it, he suggested, or maybe I did, or maybe somebody else did. That the only way that they could sell one of these buildings would be to condominiumize.
Which we don't have.
We don't have.
We don't have, so we're really stuck.
So. And the history of it is, is that they, they. Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's just wait for them to, when they show up, we'll deal with it in a more thorough way.
I'm just gonna do a review of it.
No.
No, no.
Let's just, yeah. I did just as.
When we get a formal application.
Which I do have.
Fifty-three G account, then we'll ask you to recommend.
That's what, we have their application, they have a hearing coming up.
Two weeks from today?
Yes, two weeks from today on that, we're gonna be opening a public hearing. So I just would need an established fif- amount for a fifty-three G account, I know.
What am I doing on?
I, right, so, and that's why he's here saying, what do I do? Cause I, I'm not sure.
Like a few more weeks.
Yeah, 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 if they waited almost a year, they can wait a few more weeks.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll just roll with it when we.
Yeah.
We don't wanna be too proactive.
Surface dances again.
Okay, next item on the public hearing agenda is to discuss the progress of Center Street Woods with Matt Warhurst. Is that pronounced correctly?
Yes, yes, it is.
So you are the new owner?
We are.
Of the subdivision, or I should say the remaining lots.
Yes.
And so not only have you inherited what is there and what needs to be done. But you've inherited the years of baggage and ill will that have happened as a result of the past. So I'm not gonna blame any of that for you, but that stuff doesn't go away just 'cause of new, new folks.
I think that's part of the purpose as well, why we're here.
Yes.
Just so we can get a better understanding of what are the headaches or additional headaches. Have you ever talked to these two?
You don't have enough time in your day, you should've just knocked on our doors, we would've told you all about it. And you would've run away to that headache, it is.
You are.
Twenty-three Maris.
I'm Joe Kishy.
Jessica.
Matt, I'll be on site.
Eli.
Craig's fifteen Maris, Craig, nice to meet you, Matt, Craig, nice to meet you.
Alright, so I'm sorry, wait a minute, for the record, you're.
Joseph Kishy, K-I-S-H, F as in Frank Y.
Okay, and you're the other one?
Eli Osko, E-L-I-E-O-S-K-O.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, what are, what is your role on the, on that, there, I mean, you own it?
Yeah.
And you are a part owner?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So the three of you bought the, the, the property.
From what you're saying, the head. So.
Am I good to go? I'm sorry, did you guys purchase the land from the Derritts?
Yes.
We did, okay, so it's registered.
So titles changed to your names?
That is correct, I have a copy of the deed, which.
Maris Development is the, is the owner. So they no longer have any.
Means on the property?
Means, no, I mean, we bought it with the means being satisfied, any means.
Okay.
It's my understanding, there was issues there with the private.
So there's no, they have no longer any vested interest in.
Best interest, uh, JIF Investment is a private lender on the project. I purchased it through JIF Investments, I have a deed.
So there's still involved.
So it's just.
Well, they're in, their participation is as the lender. I think they took the property back from the previous, the previous, I don't know.
Right.
Yeah, they still own it.
Right.
Say still.
Yeah.
No, they don't own it, I own it.
Maris Development.
Maris Development, they have no part of Maris Development. Other than to add the other name.
They own it.
Why do you, a bank owns your house, it's got a mortgage on it, the bank owns your house until you pay it free and clear.
Right.
Until that point, yes, they would be considered as an owner, given the fact that they're, they're the entity that is doing the lending on the project.
It's like the bank owns my house for a long time.
That's what, that's what I did say.
I'm glad they own it.
The means have all been satisfied, that's what I wanted.
What means are you referring to?
On each of the properties.
Well, well, yes, they have, so.
Okay, cause I was at the end saying that they were not.
What we purchased is five lots.
Five lots.
Okay.
So did you purchase the whole subdivision though, with the homeowners association out there right now?
No, no.
So who has that?
That.
Matt.
Midair. So they're still involved?
No.
Not Matt.
Matt has been involved in this, he's had his hands in that, you know who Matt is.
Yeah, I know Matt Antonio, well, this is nine, this is why I didn't know who you were talking to.
Matt Antonio.
So, when the, when the project is complete, beautiful houses on the, on the subdivision, every issue has been resolved.
Yep.
And, and the developer is coming before this board to ma- to seek, to turn the private road into a public way. Who's doing that, you?
No.
No.
So then all you are is, all you are is five lot property owners.
That's what I said, I own five lots.
Right.
You're not getting any permits until everything else is done there.
But.
And that's what we're working on now.
This is why we, I believe that we're in attendance to find out what the problems are. I purchased five lots over there, or we purchased five lots with the intent of building, constructing five single-family homes.
Of course.
Wasn't aware of the fact that there were issues that were going to stall the permit.
The permits have been, there have been no per- permits issued for a couple of years.
Yep.
Because the developer has not resolved the, the subdivision issues.
Correct term is a bad one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good word, perfect words.
I'm surprised Mr. Midair Ventures didn't share that information with you about the problems with the.
Are you, so you have no idea what's happened to that?
Have you driven down?
I mean, not like that, but now we've.
After doing some due diligence after the fact, that's when we became aware of it.
So you're saying what we are.
Well, my, my interests, I think, piggyback with your interests. If I own five lots.
Oh, your, your interests, absolutely, you do have the same concerns, you have more concerns than they do because their concerns are their individual lots.
Right.
Your, your concerns are, you own five lots that at this present time, you can't do anything with.
So.
So, would I suggest something?
Sure.
If they set up a site visit with Matt, go show them my, uh, uh, my office and go over all the.
Yes, that would be the, yes.
Need to be addressed.
Because now the irrigation was starting work and then they just dug holes, put more dirt. And now the irrigation system is being, who's working on that?
Stone workers.
Who's doing the irrigation plant?
So, our, our excavators have started to complete the list that GZA issued, uh, from drainage improvements. Which is the remaining work to be done on that design.
Okay.
We, we are coordinating, coordinating that because it's our understanding that needs to be done to pull. And so we, so we've dug into that.
So you are aware of some of it.
Facilitating whatever the issues that were presented by GZA.
That are working on site, it worked for us and are controlling us.
My question's going to be the same as it's been for the past two years.
Yeah.
Come April, when my yard has another three and a half feet of water.
Yeah, what, what yard are you?
I am the one that's right on the side, I am the owner of the brown house. What was last, okay. The house was built two feet low and the owner was supposed to.
Understood, yeah.
So when my, come April, when my, my lot fills again with water, because as we know, it's, it's. As we've all discussed, you know, the pipe works to a certain extent, I haven't seen a formal report from the GZA saying that the pipe has been installed correctly and. Haven't seen any of that yet.
However, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
The problems that you encountered, was that prior to the additional work with the drainage being done? Okay, so in all likelihood, given the fact that there was drainage, it's my understanding that the, um, lender that took back the property. From the private developer, incurred a cost of over a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars just for the drainage improvements. Has that been inspected, the work that has been done up to this point pertaining to drainage? Can anybody answer?
You're talking about the thirty inch pipe and a twelve inch pipe behind your house?
Been inspected by, by my firm, GZA.
Oh, so you're GZA?
Yes, I'm GZA.
Okay, so.
So that's why I was suggesting that you meet with my field guy, go over and then ex, you know, set up that contact. So that you tell us when you're doing stuff and coordinate and everything, okay?
Okay.
And, um.
It, it's my understanding that this list, um, is the remaining work that needs to be done as part of that drainage improvement. And we're in the midst of doing that with, with the hired excavator, so.
And that is dated, that is, uh, field inspection report number twenty?
Yes, August third.
Okay, that's the field inspection number twenty?
Yes, yeah.
So I guess what we're in the middle of doing now is completing that and then we were gonna call an inspection in.
Okay, I, I, I'm gonna get back to this one more time, I, cause we're, we're getting off topic.
Okay.
Come April.
Yeah.
If this pipe doesn't work, which I, I have a feeling it, it's not going to work, cause considering the, a lot, the past couple of days, we've had a lot of rain. My whole backyard, when you see the kids jungle gym, is a swampiness. Which I'm assuming is some of it's coming from lot two.
Okay.
Come April, when I have the same problem again, are you poor gentleman gonna have to fix this again?
No, I bought five lots, that's what I bought.
So that, that's my concern.
See, and there we go, back to.
So, so we didn't get off to that, that's what we were addressing, and that's what his firm is gonna inspect and tell us how to do it.
So lot two, which wasn't supposed to be cleared.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Is gonna have to be built so as no additional runoff goes to his property.
Understood.
And that's gonna be a trick, I think.
And that'll be private agent air and then.
No?
Yes.
Not a trick at all, I mean, if you guys build that up and just make sure that the water runs the opposite direction from his house. Should be fine.
Yeah.
And I mean, you got plenty of boulders out there that you can do that with.
Right.
And, I mean, I, I, I walked the three feet of water that he was talking about.
Recently?
No, no, before the pipe was installed.
Uh-huh.
He's been going through hell.